There you go. Good job. Kudos to Don for figuring that out. Alright, so let's call this meeting to order. The Woodson Council Ordinance Subcommittee Meeting, 6:00 PM. There you go. Roll call. We're all here. So, we do not have anybody for public speak. And I think we'll wait on our minutes. Maybe it's on next meeting because I haven't seen them in a while.
Good for me.
The item on our agenda is Counselor Cobb's request that we take a look at the special permit process in relation to some of the inconsistencies that were found for the Parsons Street project. So, my hope was that we could just go through the ones that were outlined by the attorney, see which ones we felt needed address, and then decide whether we want to send that to the planning board to trigger some changes.
Sounds fair. You got the lawyer thing there?
Yeah, do you want to see the cover here? And then what we have here is we have this is a letter written by Jack Fittig. It's given to him, Parisio, the chairperson from the previous, the previous chairperson from the planning board. And they outline at least nine different inconsistencies. So...
Give me a copy of that sometime, will you?
Oh yeah.
Well, I don't need it today.
Just give you this one when I'm done.
Well, I don't like to go overboard on that stuff.
Yeah. So, the first one that was outlined was building setback. And basically, this was an argument between the developer and the planning board about what a story was, you know? And because in one of the buildings, it was built on a slab, but there was going to be one section of the slab that was going to be dug out for a mechanical room. And so, they were saying that it wasn't going to fit zoning because that mechanical room made it two and a half stories. Because the building was two stories, but the mechanical room was going to be underneath the ground. And it was going to be one section that was, you know, had a boiler. And my personal opinion is that's not something that need that's a planning board determination as far as what a story is.
The way I look at it, that's not even a non-issue. When you look at it, it's like one of them, they read too much into the book.
Yeah.
And the thing of it is, like I've always thought about the book, the book has to be addressed upside down. But that thing of it, it could be addressed in simple language.
Right. So, this one, I feel like is not...
Yeah, as I say, in my opinion too, it's a non-issue because again, they're talking whether or not that story is six or feet above the grade. And they didn't even know.
They didn't, yeah.
So, why not find out whether or not it is six feet above the grade when they build it?
Right.
And then determine that it's, you know...
So, the next one, accessory buildings. So, and Don, what I'll do is I'll just read this for you.
Yeah, well...
Because that way, so it says, "Section 6.75 of the zoning ordinance states that accessory buildings, other than private garages, shall be in the rear yard." Section 6.75 also states that accessory buildings shall be, shall not be more than 10, but then it has in parentheses 12 feet in height at any point. So, 6.74, on the other hand, states that the maximum height for an accessory building shall be 25 feet. Obviously, here is an inconsistency within the ordinance. But in any event, Building E in the community building is shown on the plan certainly exceeds either 10 or 12 feet in height. So, the question here is, in the ordinance, section 6.75, it says 10, the word 10, in parentheses, the number 12, and then in the table, it says 25 feet. So, we need to address that inconsistency, I would say.
Oh yeah, definitely.
So, I'll just continue because this, I mean, this has to do kind of with attorney F. H. argues that the intent of 6.75 is not to have garden sheds or storage sheds in the front yard, and that the height requirement of 10, 12 feet applies only to those structures. I believe that it is responsible interpretation which the board could adopt if it agrees that it's reasonable. The board can determine the height limitation for other accessory structures is indeed 25 feet, and that the community building cannot exceed that height. So, I think what he's saying there is if it's a if it's a garden shed or a storage shed, then that should be 12 feet.
Could probably be.
But if it's an accessory building, then that would probably be 25 feet.
I always had a problem with that anyhow because like if a guy had, a guy's got some room when he's building up like a shed in the backyard, he wants two stories. It doesn't bother anybody, you know? It doesn't hurt nothing.
Right, and so...
You know, or like a three house for the kids or something like that before we get into this thing. But that should be addressed and...
Well, what they're trying to say is that a community building would be an accessory building. And I think, you know, what the attorney said was, you know, it's not always possible to put an accessory building in the back in a multifamily housing thing. So, I think that regardless of what they're trying to say, I think it would make sense for us to clarify.
I just want to question to you, what was the date on that letter for it was given?
2011. June 10th, 2011, two years ago.
Did the planning board even get to this yet?
No.
Well, they're robbing the ball.
So, we're going to, we're going to put it in their court. So, which is, you know, which is fine. So, we'll take, we'll, what we, for this specific session, we're going to want to ask the planning board to take a look at section 6.75. And we're going to want them to clarify whether it's 10 or 12 feet. I think our suggestion, I would say 12 feet makes sense. And then further identify the 25 foot as a
Accessory building.
Accessory building, non-shed or, you know, like a non-little shed. You know, something that's different. So, there just needs to be a little bit more definition to that, I think.
I'd say we'll clarify it a long time ago.
Yeah.
Wouldn't even be in the book that way.
That's an easy one. And then the third one is distance between the walls of principal structures. And section 6.83 of the ordinance provides that only one principal structure shall be permitted on a lot. Section 6.83A further provides that the maximum distance between the walls of such principal buildings which contain windows shall be twice the minimum side or side setback required by the district. However, section 8.32B provides that more than one structure may be allowed on a lot in a multifamily housing project by special permit. Again, we have an inconsistency which must be interpreted and resolved by the board.
Well, I'd suggest that goes to the planning board too.
Yeah, well, and again, I think that it's just some clarification. If you look at the first line of 6.83, the ordinance providing only one principal structure, it should be with the exception of multifamily developments, housing projects. Because it's, you know, they're not subdividing the lot on a multifamily project.
Exactly, exactly.
And I mean, I'm completely for multifamily, you know, if you look at density of housing versus spreading things out into open space. But it's just a matter of clarifying that. And then, you know, it's the other stuff about, you know, it gets into that some of the buildings might not be in compliance with twice the minimum side yard. Well, again, that's why there's special permits and everything else. That's not really for us to get into. Now, the only other thing is the middle paragraph, attorney Beglan argues that section 6A requires the building must be at least 40 feet wide in Zone R15, twice the setback. And then accordingly, buildings be, no. Okay, never mind.
Yeah.
I remember that there being something about that, but...
I think, I think the whole, the whole thing has to be looked at from top to bottom, and they got to get the inconsistencies out of it.
Right.
And they use some more plain language. The only thing that might put a little boogaboo on it, and I can't remember exactly what it was. When we made, when we made out special areas like for the church or something like that, I wonder, I wonder if that falls under there too? I can't remember anything about it. And I forgot even what that was. That was on a... I forgot who presented that. Burns presented that. Forgot what they called it.
What was it again?
Like for taking a, taking a shirt when a church is going up and like that, like on Franklin Street.
Oh, right, right, right.
Yeah.
Re-classifying it.
Yeah, I just wondered if there was any reclassification down in that area too. Because there's something, I think there was something that happens out of that district, but I'm not sure.
I'm not sure.
I'll read number four.
Go ahead.
But for number four, minimum yard setbacks, under section 8.32C, the maximum number of dwelling units per structure is 18, with the condition that in R15 zone, the minimum yard setback shall be increased to 50 feet if the structure contains over six units. While the ordinance does not use the word feet, it's my opinion that the intent was to increase the minimum yard setback to 50 feet if there are over six units. It goes on then, and, you know, so we might want to just have them add feet instead of 50. But it goes on to say that, again, the attorney correctly points out that the three buildings each have seven units, and therefore, four must be set back to 50 feet from the property line as currently drafted. Again, I don't really see that this is, you know, what we're looking at strictly, you know?
Just the omission of the word feet.
Yeah.
I think it is, when you got to develop it or to grab it wherever you can.
Consider... Maybe the word feet. So, number five. Tree vegetation removal. Section 8.331A4 requires the developer to minimize, I'm not stressing the word minimize here because this is where you run into, "Developer minimize tree vegetation, soil remover, and grade changes." Attorney argues that the development calls for the removal of a large area vegetation, trees from the easterly portion of the site in violation of this regulation. This is another issue for the board to decide. The board acts within its discretion reviewing the extent of pre-removal and deciding whether or not it is excessive or violates the ordinance. The same may be said with requirements of 8.331B, which requires that residential structures shall be visually separated by trees and plantings. Again, the determination as to whether or not that requirement has been met rests with the sound discretion of the board. I mean, it's, we can't develop a lot if there's trees on it without removing trees. So, I think...
I think this one is probably, I don't know how else we can say that. I mean, it seems like, to me, I understand the intent of it.
Right.
Which is, alright, if you have like a big tree there, you don't clear cut the whole thing and then build your development, leave some vegetation.
Right. And if you do clear cut it, or if it had to be cleared cut for the purpose of developing, then you go back down to, you know, shall be visibly separated by trees and plantings. It's like, okay, we plant it, you know, we landscape it afterward.
Yeah, to me, this one seems like it's okay the way it is.
Yeah, again, it's up to the planning board personally, their interpretation.
So, that would be technically on that.
There we go. Want to do drainage?
Sure, okay. So, section 8.331B also requires that each lawn must be provided with access, drainage, and utilities, functionally equivalent to that provided under the planning board's subdivision rules and regulations. This is, this is about porous pavement. And... And I don't know what this, I don't have with me the planning board's subdivision rules and regulations. But it says that that's solely within the board's discretion. It's up to the board to make that determination. So, it seems like, again, that's
I would say no change.
Something that we don't need to worry about because that's the planning board's rules. And then the next one is...
Yeah, but don't forget there that the storm, yeah, the storm pipe, storm tickles out is underside for the whole street. The town didn't want to address it.
For...
So, that's why, so that's why they couldn't, they couldn't drain the lot into the storm, storm floor. And that's why they're talking to the impervious pavement. And the thing of it is like, I couldn't, I never, I thought that the town, that the town and the developer would get together, they shared the cost of creating that platform all the way through. Because, you know, I thought that would be one of the best solutions.
Yeah.
And nobody would touch it, so...
Well, it seems like, yeah, I mean, again, that's that's particular to that project.
Yeah.
And so, it doesn't really have a whole lot of, you know, there's nothing we can look at in relation to that because that is the planning board's rules on their subdivision stuff.
I know that the whole planning board, when they go on through, when we give them the list, tell them who we...
Yeah, let's go through each one. So, section 8.334, open space. Subsection A of this section provides that all land not developed to dwellings or accessory uses and roads, et cetera, shall be preserved as open space, which shall be permanently protected by donation of conservation restrictions to the city of East Hampton. Attorney Etheridge calls this curious language, pointing out that appears to contradict the other part of the ordinance, which requires a great deal of landscaping, buffers, and tree planting. Yet requires that 50% of the open space be grass or landscaped for passive recreation. Tend to agree with attorney Etheridge that the language is confusing and curious. In any event, the ordinance says what it says, and the board may wish to consider conditioning its approval, if any, on the grant some open space via conservation restrictions to the city. Section 8.334B requires that multifamily dwellings be separated from adjacent properties by buffer strips and or fencing sufficient to minimize visual and noise impacts of the development. In my opinion, the board acts within the discretion of determining whether or not a buffer is sufficient to meet the intent of that ordinance. So, open space, I mean...
I would just request clarification on the definition of open space.
Right.
Because again, what is open space? Is it grass, or is it, could it be plantings? Could it be the buffer? Is that considered open space? That's...
Yeah, that one's a little strange. I think what I'd like to do is I'd like to look into, I'd like to look at section 8.334 in its entirety before I decide whether we want the planning board to... And it seems like the intent is to try to, if they're doing a big multifamily thing, is to try to preserve some open space for people to be able to recreate on.
Throw a frisbee, whatever.
Right, which makes sense if you have a big development. Maybe it's just not worded properly, you know?
You'd have to remember down there, one of the, one of the things that they were worried about is if a bunch of kids are in there, there wasn't going to be enough
Place to play.
Space to play, and what they're worried about is they're going to go play in the old cemetery. And that's what they, that's what they were trying to... So, I personally, I think that whole section could be reworked from top to bottom. I mean, it, you know, I mean, I don't want to change too much of the intent of it. But I mean, the thing of it is, I think it could be reworked.
Yeah. So, we'll take a look at the language on that one and see. "All land not devoted to dwellings, accessory uses, and or roads shall be preserved as open space, which shall be permanently protected by donation of conservation restriction to the city of East Hampton." Yeah, this, you know, this is... I think it can be worded differently, you know? All, shall, "all land not devoted to dwellings or accessory uses and or roads..." That's a little strange. Okay, we'll take a look at that one. Alright, so, we're almost to the end here, so want to do this one?
Yeah, sure. Parking spaces.
Don't fail me. If you want to look at that zoning ordinance, right? And I don't think it'd be necessary for us to have another meeting before we go forward with it. I'm willing to leave that to your discretion.
Okay. Cool. I'll take, I'll take a look at it in its entirety and see if I can get a read on it. And then what we can, what I'll do is I'll just, maybe you can send me the notes. And then we can, we can take a, you know, I'll type it up and we'll take a look at that particular one. I'll just add it in when we bring it to the council.
So, on number eight, then, parking spaces. Section 8.335A requires that no individual parking area shall contain more than 14 spaces. While parking area is not defined in the ordinance, a parking space is. See section 2.1. "In any event, the plan shows several parking areas that exceed 14 spaces, and the board would be acting within its authority to require that the developer revise the plan to comply with the requirement by breaking up the parking area with trees, bushes, or other methods." I really, I'm not sure what they're talking about defining a parking area. Here, if you consider a parking area as a space that is made up of multiple parking spaces,
Yeah.
then I think it's pretty clear that these parking areas, again, are in violation of the ordinance if they contain more than 14 spaces. So, I'm not so sure that this really needs further clarification.
Right.
But the thing of it is, the way everything is written there, it's not clear and concise for a person to pick up and read it and form an opinion out of anything in the whole book. Because the language, because the language is is convoluted throughout the whole book. And the thing of it is, I'd like to see all the language cleared up in that whole section.
Well, I mean, Don, this is pretty clear. I mean, it says, it just says, "No individual parking area shall contain more than 14 spaces." I mean...
And further, parking space.
May I interject? Are you just getting, you guys?
No, go ahead.
Okay, now, this, this wouldn't apply to existing. This is new.
This is under the special permit.
Oh, a special permit process.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, but...
And this is particular to multifamily dwellings.
Yeah. But it's a special permit process in itself is a corrupt process. And the way, the way you need to vote on the planning board, there's the problem. You, we, I was told this 10 years ago by a man. He says, you know, that's the corruptest thing going when you get the special permit process, where you're looking for, I don't know, what do you need for a special permit? Four and five?
Yeah, you need a majority, a supermajority.
Supermajority, so... Everybody's running around either to get somebody not to vote for it so you can't get the supermajority, or they're fighting to get it. I think if they had an enhanced site plan review process, you know, get all the things you want out of the special permit process, put them in a site plan review process. Instead of going, like this thing on North Amity Street, how's, how long has that been going? 10 years now. I mean, since we first started to where we are. It's because of the special permit process. I mean, if they could get away from that, make, get some sort of enhanced site plan review, get, get everything you want out of that special permit process, put it in this, call it a site plan review, and you don't have to deal with the law on site plan review. That's, you know, call it something else because that's, that's a bad process.
I think we can go back to the planning board and ask if there's, you know, something that they can do to revise the process. Alright, I mean, that was the, I think in the intent of Justin Konsakov is that something be more transparent with that process so people can understand.
I mean, they could get the same thing on site plan and require the same things. Okay, require the parking, require everything. But just don't call it special permit. When you get into the planning board, you need a supermajority.
Alright, so you wouldn't have to have the vote.
Right.
I think that's been, I mean, that's been tossed around a little bit. And for some projects, the site plan review is all you need.
Yeah.
I mean, it's just, it's the big contentious ones.
Right.
Which is, which I think the reason the special permit is there for the big contentious ones is because they're big and contentious.
Well, it always ends up in the lawsuit. I'll tell you why. I mean, if you, look, take a look where we are now. Okay, they allowed the medical center, right?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
They allowed, that sets a precedent. Now, if you go in there and get a vote that's, doesn't comply with what they did, or is...
So, you want to...
Do the same thing that they did when denied.
A same, a same size building for a different use in a smaller area. So, you're in the same area.
Same, and then you're going to be in a lawsuit automatically if you, if it's denied. I mean, I think...
I guess you have to make sure that your planning board knows what they're doing so they don't build in that project that should be approved if it meets the criteria, right?
They had to buy law, no parking, they didn't want any parking in front of the building. Which is, which is silly, which is silly. Now, if you're going, if you're traveling on the highway side, you're going, say you're in Oklahoma, for instance, and you, and the building's up front, all the people are in the back. You say, I ain't going in that goddamn place. There's no cars in there. You know, people are attracted to the cars. I mean, if there's a lot of cars in the lot, that's the place you want to go. Especially if you're dealing with a restaurant or, or some, someone to that. But trying to hide the cars, I just don't, I just don't understand their theory of hiding the cars.
I feel like, didn't that come to us?
Huh?
Didn't we deal with that like a couple of years ago? The parking...
But I mean, yeah, if something got changed, again, some, a little bit of worrying.
But it was, it wasn't, it wasn't, uh... How was it? I feel like we did, I feel like...
We did, we did address it slightly.
Yeah.
We addressed it by changing We, we addressed it by changing one or two words, you didn't like the words I had, you, you changed it.
I remember.
Yeah, you didn't like, you didn't like my use of the code.
It wasn't, it wasn't, but we looked at park, the parking issue in front of buildings.
Let me, let me give you a hypothetical in that parking in the rear and the side. Okay, now, okay, now you want the parking in the rear, say they're all parking in the rear, what are you going to have, the deliveries from the front? And what if you've got a slope like this, and it's a high intensity type business, whereas a lot of people going and pushing carts, they're flying down a hill, uh, trucks that are backing in, making deliveries, people are parking their cars, either that, or you're putting, your, your deliveries come in the front door. And what do you do? Walk from the back around the front to get in? I mean, that, that, that whole concept doesn't make sense.
Yeah, I guess I'd have to look at that one again, but again, I don't think that this particular issue's not on our agenda. So, I don't, I don't think we can really enter into too much debate about it without getting into trouble, you know?
It's not like, sort of anonymous.
Too far afield.
Salem, I'm hearing you're getting all the trouble you want.
What was that?
I'm hearing you're getting all the trouble you want.
Oh, you, well, you can, you, yeah, but I'm in the chair, I'm responsible for that, I don't want to violate open meeting law. But, I mean, so, back to this, do we feel like we looked at, you know, as far as what the lawyer identified as discrepancies?
But, I mean, I, I would be more happy if they addressed every issue right through, I mean, I mean, just, just because we're, we picked out certain ones there, and we let one, two go by, or three, the one that-
Which one?
Uh, well, Mason, Mason had one, he just got to that.
Number five, no change in it, it's up to the planning board. Uh, number five being tree vegetation removal, the word minimize.
Right.
You know, I mean, it was kind of, what was hinging on that.
I would like, I'd like, I'd like to have the foot, a good section in every, in every one of those subjects. And then the thing of it is, to see if they, if from top to bottom, if they could clear up the language or whatever, certainly, to pick up the book and read it.
Well, I know, I mean, I know, just what I've been told, you know, first of all, I don't, our charge is not to look at the entire, this entire code and try to-
Yeah.
I think what we're looking at is the, the ones that were pointed out to us specifically as containing errors.
Okay, get into the one, uh, non, uh, non-conforming sideline, the extension of the building on the non-conforming sideline, you need, you know, say you got a three-foot sideline, you go in and they say, oh, you need a special permit. Okay, but now you get the special permit, then they say, oh, you need a variance. Now, you shouldn't need a variance and a special permit.
Literally, that's-
I mean, a variance, uh, you, you have to have different criteria to get a variance. Special permit, you can get easy, but, uh, I, if they look at that, I mean, I had the same situation, and I went through it. You know, we got the special permit, then they said you need a variance, but my situation didn't meet the criteria to get a variance. I mean, it should be just a special permit and, and, and not a variance, because a variance, it, there's got to be no other way you can do the job, and then you can get a variance. It's impossible to do the building, the project. And that's the only way you can get a variance. I mean, it doesn't meet, you know, I had my situation, didn't meet that standard. And there shouldn't be special permit and variance, there should be one or the other.
And again, that's something that we could request for clarification, but it's not specific to the-
Right, that's just one of the things in a book that, that I ran into, that didn't make a whole lot of sense. It's a case for a lawyer, okay, now let's go to court with it, I mean, that's nonsense. Where in the Am Street, I mean, you're looking at three or four years, and if you got a project that's going to get online in six months, you can't be contesting it. I mean, if you've got to have a clear understanding of what you can do and what you can't do. And it's better for the board still.
Right, I think, you know, what would probably be helpful is if you have, you know, specific things that you have seen as redundant or not, maybe, I mean, if you wrote those down.
Yeah, and, and, and submitted them as, as problem areas.
Right, that would, that would be more helpful for us.
Right.
Um, because that way we have something tangible that we can look at, you know, and then, um, that can start triggering, you know, further exploration. I, I am, I'm under the impression that there's going to be recommendations coming out of the North Hampton Street, um, group, soon, right? For zoning.
North Hampton Group.
The, the, like, I, I don't know, I thought, I heard that there was going to be some recommendations coming out soon, maybe it was at the last planning, did you remember that? No, okay, no, maybe, maybe a-
That thing's been in limbo for a while, I don't know where it really sits right now.
Yeah, well, and if not, uh, you know, the, the, I've also heard that some, somewhere on the horizon, in the not-too-distant future, is a complete review of the zone, complete, special permit at all. Which would, which, I mean, we don't have the time or expertise to do, I mean, but I think it would, it would create, you know, do your goal of simplifying things and creating something that, you know, is a little bit more user-friendly.
Salem, Salem, one of the big problems we have with zoning in this town today is Pioneer Valley Planning Commission Committee has wrote, and wrote some of the zoning, which still works. And once Pioneer Valley comes in here, I would, would be reading for those people, and I'm very disappointed in the way they look at addressing things in town, because it's one regulation after another regulation, it doesn't make sense for the existing community. And the thing of it is, in this town, you have enough people that are smart enough to sit down and write a simplified zoning process that everybody could be happy with, and bring it to the voter and let them vote on. Never mind the city council, take it to the voter.
North Hampton just went into this zoning business. They're trying to get that zoning be consistent with what's on the ground. Okay, if you get all these houses on, on, on fifty-foot lots or sixty-foot, seventy-foot lots, you don't go out and make a hundred, hundred-foot frontage requirement, you know? I mean, zoning should be consistent with what's on the ground.
Yeah, and I think the problem with the East Hampton zoning is it's been a mishmash from when it started to the changes that happened that weren't, that didn't necessarily conform to the original, and, and it's just been piecemeal. You know, it hasn't been looked at in, in, in total, so, I think once that happens, we can, I, I think it's a good idea to look at what's on the ground, but then again, not only look at what's on the ground, but what do we want on the ground? What is our, what's our ideal, you know, um, vision for our zoning in East Hampton?
If you get into areas where the lots are smaller, and, and you've got, say, four or five hundred houses in there, everybody's happy, I mean, why can't you just continue with the same, maybe not exactly the same, but close to the same?
See, Salem, we're not, we're not using, we haven't been using our property right in this town for, I'd say, twenty-five or thirty years.
We're wasting land, we're, we're requiring too big a lot size. You know, it's, it's not, they, it, it, a small lot is not for everybody, nor is a big lot, you know? Big lots become unaffordable, not only because of the size of the lot, it's the, the house that you have to put on it in order to create this lot with, say, a hundred and twenty-foot frontage and forty thousand square feet, now you got to put a four hundred and twenty thousand dollar house on it, you can't do anything affordable. The smaller the lots, the more affordable we can get. I mean, I mean, I, I like affordable in the sense that you don't get involved with any government programs, okay? You don't go looking for government money, because they're broke anyway. Uh, and, and the lots are smaller, and you build smaller houses on smaller lots, and more people can afford them.
Well, my two uncles-
I think we're getting a little bit off topic.
I just wanted to say one thing. To back him up a little bit, my two uncles back in, uh, in the fifties, Paul Street was just developed up there in town, and they were going to move to Paul Street, and they didn't like the size of the lots. So they got together and they bought three lots between them to build their houses on. My, my other uncle down there on, uh, Motor Street, same thing, a lot and a half. And he finally found out he was paying on two lots, and he, you know, he tried to get some money back for it. I make a most of them wing here, George.
We're going to do a bar view.
Yeah, we're not, we're not quick.
We haven't finished, uh, numbers eight and nine. But I, I'm going back to the parking spaces, and I, I completely agree, Don, that this should be, you know, the ordinance should, anybody should be able to pick it up and read through it, be able to understand. And that's why I would actually be worried about adding language. You know, here we're saying that there's, uh, again, the section requires that no individual parking area shall contain more than fourteen spaces. While parking area and areas is not defined in the ordinance, a space is. Now, do we need really to add language to find what a parking area is? I mean, that's, I don't think so, I mean, it's-
Hey, let me interject one more thing, and, and you guys can finish it, and I'll get the hell out of here. Uh, it, what was I? I lost my thoughts, right? Keep going, I'll think of it.
Okay, but again, it says, you know, in any event, the plan shows several parking areas that exceed fourteen spaces. Well, and again, that would be in violation of the ordinance.
Right, so they couldn't do it.
And they define what a parking space is, which I think is pretty generous, an area of not less than two hundred square feet. So you're talking ten by twenty, that's a generous sized parking.
It'll be car.
Yeah, it's a generous sized parking space. So, you know, again, we're saying in the ordinance, you can't have more than fourteen ten-by-twenty spaces, or, you know, plus it goes further to say that, you know, with parking space, that you can have, uh, access area too, plus access and maneuvering space. So I, I think that there's really no requirement to go further in defining what a parking area is.
Zoning book, we, everybody agreed with it at that meeting, right? They should have a pamphlet for each zone. Neighborhood business, this business, that business, none of this bullshit, refer back to this page, go into this, go into, it's too confusing. A pamphlet for each zoning district. Even, even if it's the same in the other district, but put it all out in one place where you can get exactly what you want. Your neighborhood business is a neighborhood business folder.
Yeah, makes sense.
This crap of, the book, oh, refer to fifteen dash four, blue, in here and there, that, that's just confusing. That's not user-friendly. That would be the best thing they could do in town, even if they just put it together with what they had. Then, they could take each zoning district and refine it the way they want it. Not, what you have now is all mixed up in one big thing like this, and confusing as hell, and if you want to change the zoning, how would you? You'd have to change language, uh, cross-reference and all that crap, put it all in each, each one to pamphlet, read zone.
I think that'd be a good recommendation.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, I, I, if I remember that argument correctly, that when, uh, our new planner addressed that, he found conflicts between the parking downtown and the parking on North Am Street, numbers it all, and it was, uh, there's conflicts all over the place.
Well, you have one, that downtown business district have one pamphlet for, one book, one, whatever. And North Am Street or President's-
So that would be how it's-
Our fifteen, our twenty, forty-five put it all in one pamphlet, instead of all this cross-referencing, and then if you want to change something, you have to change all your cross-references, that's why you need a, uh, thirty people and two hundred thousand dollars to do a master plan. If you just separated it in one, in little compartments, then if you wanted to straighten out the, the business district, you go there and you straighten it out, and you leave everything, everything else alone.
Yeah, I think that's, uh-
That'd be the best thing to do.
Okay, you guys get on the course.
Behave yourself.
Yeah.
Okay, so, my recommendation is no changes are there.
All right, and your recommendation, I can, I can limit it, I mean, the thing of it is, my, I just hope with my lifetime, that zoning is addressed, that's all from top to bottom, and the thing of it is, you told me the date that that letter from, from, uh-
Two thousand and eleven.
Two thousand-
It's two years old.
What year was it now, two thousand and thirteen? I can't believe that that thing kicked around that long without being addressed. I mean, shame, shame, shame on, on, uh, the administration. Okay, that also.
Yeah, as I said, on the ball, on number nine, financial matters, I don't think that there's any action required, it's, again, completely up to the board on that piece, so,
Yeah.
Or up to the plan. Alright.
Very good. So, well, let's, uh, so what we'll do is, uh, if you can email me those things, I'll type them up in a, and, uh, something that we'll put in front of the council and have sent to the planning board, and then we will start the process to try to address, you know? And, and there's no reason why this couldn't spur other fixes, you know, if there are other discrepancies, and, you know, we can fix things as we find them, and and I think that pamphlet idea is, you know, is a good idea, maybe that's something that, well, the planner could have an interview, you know?
I'm sorry, I need to, uh, who was that, who was here?
That was Bernard Gaul. Bernard Gaul with the-
Bernard Gaul. G-A-U-L-E. G-A-W-L-E.
G-A-W-L-E.
W-L.
I just say spoke at the beginning. I'll say one thing for that man. He alone could manage this whole place with all the, with all the administration, that's how hard he works.
Simplifying from the shoplifting.
Auto-complete.
Didn't get it though, I took a scoop at this to him, but I didn't make it. We were better with spitballs than our school.
Alright.
You probably made that motion to adjourn there, Don.
Huh? Motion to adjourn? So moved.
Alright.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, so-
If Don is the, the, I thought that-
Six forty-two, you can press the button again.